Go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, September 1st, 2020 to order pursuant to section 3 of Executive Order N 29-20 issued by Governor Newsom. On March 17th, 2020, cities are allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. So if I could ask the city clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Here.
Mayor Protem Yu? Mayor Protem Yu?
You're muted, Vince.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Mayor Protem is here, we just couldn't hear him.
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
There he is. Yeah, we can hear him. Thank you. Okay, so everyone is present. I just want to remind those who are calling in to, your microphone will be unmuted during public comment, and when public comment is open during an agendized item discussion, you can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us. You can do that now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Okay, we will now move on to our invocation, and I'm very pleased and happy to welcome Pastor Daryl Kelty from the Community of Christ Church, as we know located at 9468 Broadway Avenue in Temple City, and he is going to be providing us tonight with our invocation. So Pastor Kelty, it's good to see you and hear you again. To me, it brings back a little bit of normalcy to things, to see our pastors participating in our meetings again, so thank you for agreeing to come. So I will turn it over to you now for the invocation.
Can everyone hear me all right?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good. I'm always afraid that I'm speaking to, but no one's hearing me. Let us pray. Our heavenly Creator, who is a source of all good things, we are a few of your children, though we are meeting at a social distance from one another, are walking hand in hand with you into this meeting to seek a better city, both for ourselves and for the generations to come. We do this in all humility, that the business we conduct might be for the best for this city, for all of its inhabitants and citizens, that no one in this city might be lacking. We pray of strength for the staff that supports the city council, indeed, they may give them the best that they have, this city may do the best that they can do. And to the audience here gathered, we welcome you this morning, indeed invite you to share of yourselves, that this city, though most separated, is indeed one city with a special call, become the best we can be. This we would ask even in thy name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Kelty, and thank you for joining us this evening and for those words. You stay safe yourself and, you know, if there's anything that we can do, let us know. So you be safe, thank you.
I want a pay raise.
Okay, we'll work on that for you. Okay, we will now move to, we will now move to our Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart, there's our flag, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, thank you very much for that.
You know, that's a hard way to do it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so we will now move on to our ceremonial matters, there are none this evening, and so we will move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. The city council will now hear public comments regarding items not listed on the agenda. I will begin by asking our city clerk, if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, Mayor, there are no email requests to speak.
And do we have anybody who is on the line who would like to speak at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comments. We will now move on to item seven, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a, a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, unless there's any objection. Madam Clerk, will you take roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you, consent calendar has been approved. We will now move on to item eight, public hearing, there is none, unfinished business, there is none. We will now move on to item number 10, which is a request to continue a public hearing for the appeal of a planning case, PL 19-1668 at 5637 Santa Anita Avenue. I will turn that over. Brian, are you going to start with that, or are we going to go to Mr. Reimers?
Mayor Chavez, members of the council, just very briefly, the staff report's pretty self-explanatory. The item was brought forward to the Planning Commission this past summer, the deadline is what it is in terms of the code, the council has the ability to extend that, and I'll let Mr. Reimers provide any other additional information.
Thank you. Mr. Reimers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the applicant has, and the appellant are the same person, they have asked that this item be scheduled in February. We, as the planning and community development staff, are ready to present this item on September 15th, as required by the code, but if the council decides to, to continue this item, the applicant and appellant is requesting February. That's, I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, is the app, is the appellant online, is he participating with us this evening?
I don't see him, but it's not like a public hearing, Mayor Chavez, this is a regular item, so the appellant would speak in the course of public comments, not in the, where you have more discretion in terms of a public hearing, so, but I see there's a caller too, is, can you?
We can hold, we can hold off until I call public comment, and if he's here, he can announce himself. All right, so we'll go ahead and begin with council questions. Councilmember Mann, do you have any questions for staff?
No, no questions, just one small observation, I think the agenda recommendation says February 16th, 2020, you mean next year, right, February 16th of 2021?
Yes, sorry, thank you, Councilmember Mann, that was a typographical error.
Okay, that, that's all, I figured that's my.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist, any questions of staff?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Councilmember Viscarra?
No questions, thank you.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a simple question, I want to understand, because this is a, I guess, coal preservation case, if we were to delay this till for six months, what does that really mean? Does that mean that we're, we're not taking any actions, or the appellant or the applicant would have six more months to comply?
Yes, we would be putting the community preservation case on hold while the applicant completes their planning applications, so he wouldn't be taking any further action on this until the item is decided.
Right. Thank you.
And I will, I will say, Mr. Mayor, Protem, and other council members and mayor, that is a distinction between this project and many of the, in this case, the applicant, who is the appellant, had to apply and the Planning Commission imposed some modifications. Normally, when your applicant is the appellant, they did not get what they wanted, and so if they wanted to extend the period of time, it's a longer period of time that they would be going without what they're seeking. In this case, the applicant had done, as you know, had done some bit of work, and then it came to the commission, and the commission recommended some modifications that ultimately you will hear, so by allowing the extended time, you're allowing more time for the applicant to not come into compliance. If that weighs in your decision-making, I just wanted to let you know that that's legally what we see. Other than that, I have no comments on this matter.
Thank you.
All right, I was muted myself here. Mayor Protem, does that conclude your questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions, and that's, perhaps I was hoping maybe the applicant is here tonight with us. Was there any reason given by the appellant for the continuance request? I noticed there's an attachment A to our report, basically it looks like it was an email that was sent to our city manager, basically asking to move the hearing to February 2021, and saying that he, I need more time. Is staff aware of any particular reason why he needs more time, or, or any kind of reason for the continuance given?
Mayor Chavez, the, our, the appellant would have to either express that during public comment or otherwise, but what we received is part of the record.
Okay, so I'll take that as a no, that you don't have any further information from the appellant regarding his, his request for continuance.
That is one way to describe it, yes, we've had conversations with him, but in terms of part of the record, he'd have to express it tonight or have it in writing.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just, we haven't gotten to that point, I was just trying to find out whether or not the appellant has given any reason for his continuance other than what has been presented to us.
Yeah, he, he needs more time because he feels as though he would like to present in person, but I, again, what's been articulated in, in writing and what he can express is there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then I will open up public comment, I will first begin by asking our city clerk to check for any public comment emails on this matter.
Mayor, there are no email public comment requests.
Okay, and if you could unmute the microphones, do we have anybody out there in the public who wishes to comment on this matter at this time? Is the, I will ask again, is the appellant out there, joining this meeting tonight? It doesn't appear to be. I, I hear no, no one.
Mayor, we have one caller and their microphone has been muted.
Okay.
Unmuted, unmuted.
Unmuted, okay. All right, so I'm assuming that is not the appellant. Okay, so hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will go ahead and proceed with any final questions and/or comments by council, and so I'll begin with Councilmember Mann.
No, I don't have any questions or comments, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sternquist?
I have none.
Councilmember Viscarra?
None.
You, Mayor Protem Yu, any comments or questions? We can't hear you, Vince.
All right, I was muted again. No, I don't, I don't have any further comments. Well, I do find the request for six months is kind of long, but I think the nature of the community preservation case, especially in this COVID-19 world, I think, I, I, I can make a case that we should grant that extension.
Okay, thank you. Well, I, I'm looking at it a different way, I, I haven't heard that there is a COVID reason for this extension, I'm a little disappointed that the appellant did not attend the meeting. Apparently, according to the city manager, that may be his reason for the request to continue, is that he wants to address us live, I guess. When that's going to happen, I have no idea, that's anybody's guess, and in February of next year, we still may be doing what we are doing now. I have a hard time with this request for two reasons. One, there really has been no valid reason presented by the applicant for the continuance, and also, on top of that, going to February of 2021 seems like a long time, especially since the Planning Commission and our enforcement have already found a violation to have occurred, and as our city attorney represented earlier, that will simply continue to go on for a number of months. And as you can see from the report, this is not a matter that has just been here with us for the last 30 to 60 days. This case was opened up in July of 2018, which is quite a long time to have gotten this resolved, you know, so I, for one, cannot support a continuance to February 16th, 2020. Again, however, to, to the Mayor Protem's point, certainly, these are difficult days, difficult times, and giving the applicant the benefit of the doubt, we will certainly, I think, a reasonable continuance would not be out of the question, and to me, since he has already had this for quite a while, I think, again, I don't know why he wants the continuance, or what is the reason for the continuance, but certainly whatever he needs to do should, of course, be readily available to him, probably within the next 30 to 60 days, and so I could support perhaps a continuance for that amount of time, and perhaps, if that were something that we were going to grant, he could always come back, I'm assuming Mr. Murphy come back and, and ask the council for a further continuance, perhaps with a, with maybe a better reason at that time.
Certainly, he could, what, what would happen, Mr. Reimers and, and his staff would notice the public hearing on the appeal, and if the applicant, appellant wanted to seek another continuance, he could make that the start of his presentation to you, say before we go further, you know, let's, let's talk about this, and then you can weigh that issue at that time.
Great, thank you. Okay, any, any further comment? If, if there is none, then I will entertain a motion.
I, I want to actually ask you a question, Mr. Mann, so are you saying that you are, will be okay in continuing this matter to the next meeting, and ask the applicant to come back and address the council?
Well, again, you know, my concern is, there were two concerns, one is the lack of a reason, and then two, the amount of time requested. I, I would be comfortable, perhaps, at this time, without any further information, to grant the appellant a continuance of up to perhaps 60 days, to, to have, to participate in a hearing, and then, of course, as, as the city attorney just indicated, at that hearing or prior to that hearing, he certainly could ask for more time if he needs it. I would hope at that time that he would have some type of reason to do so, but given the fact that there's really nothing before us to really say, a, a five month, I don't know, what is that, six months, five months continuance is warranted, without that, I, I just have a hard time going that long, considering this case has been around. So, so to sum it up, yes, I would, I would agree to a, a 60-day continuance of this, with what information we have before us at this point.
I, I think that's reasonable, so with that, Mr. Mayor, I will move that the council grant the appellant 60-day continuance, when to come back to, 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 to present in the, in the public hearing for the appeal of a planning case, PL 19-1668, at 5637 Santa Anita Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second?
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, if we could have roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yeah.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that, so we will now move on to item B, it's our community development block grant program, COVID-19 relief program update, and small business grant program guidelines. Mr. Cook, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez, and I will be turning this over to our, one of our, Adam Gulick, who, along with Mr. Reimers, Ms. Avery, and many other staff have been doing a great job with this program. So, as you know, the rental program has been going forward, property owners and, and tenants are being, getting the relief, and we are going through that process right now, checks have been cut, actually on your warrant register that you approved today, several of those rental relief checks have been cut as well. As we've been going through the small business loan program, though, you did create some criteria and some priorities, and as we've gotten through them, one of those priorities was that you wanted to prioritize those businesses that did not receive any relief, and you tiered the, the businesses that you were targeting. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Gulick to just, and we, we felt is, this was one of those moments where things had hit such a threshold that we thought it was important to bring back to you as quickly as possible without delaying anything, not waiting another two weeks to come back to you, so to move this as expeditiously as possible. So with that, I will, I will let Adam present to you kind of what the issue at hand is, and see if you want to have any discussion or direction, or you're okay with the prior direction that you gave, and what that would mean to the current applicant pool, or if you would like to adjust some direction.
Thank you, Mr. Cook, good evening, Mayor, council members, members that are on the line listening. We had reached out to 30 businesses that were, had submitted interest forms, there's a total of 154. 18 businesses had submitted a formal application, we've gone through and reviewed all those applications, and we had discovered that 12 of those have already received some form of assistance, whether it's the payroll protection program or a small business assistance loan. So that's, accounts for two-thirds of the, the applications that were submitted, so as Brian was mentioning earlier, you know, that's, that was a very large number, we didn't expect that many businesses were going to receive some assistance, and like he had mentioned, we, we have been going through the program, the program, program hasn't been on hold, we have been going through and reviewing all the applications, we've met with our, the consultant that was brought on board, and he actually had some suggestions for updating our, some of the forms that we created to help us with reviewing applications, and then also to be a little more head-friendly for when we're audited, so we do have some possible solutions. We could continue with what the, the original guidelines are, or we could still issue grants to the businesses that have received some type of assistance, or we could do a partial, so that's, we'll be requesting some direction from you all tonight, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. We'll begin with council member questions, why don't we start with Mayor Protem Yu this time?
So, I, I want to understand, Mr. Gulick, that you're really asking us if we want to exclude businesses that have already received some form of resistance, assistance, right?
Right, that's currently what's in the guidelines, that you all approved a few months, or a couple months ago, so we just wanted to make sure that you guys want to continue moving forward with that, or if you want to reconsider that.
Is there any reason why you think that we need to reconsider? I thought that that was a decision that we made, is it because some of these assistance is really not that much, or is that, what prompted the, the question is what I'm kind of curious?
I think just the, the large number of applicants that have received assistance, so, you know, we kind of went through and prioritized the different types of businesses that, the, the city that we felt that should be assisted first, and we're basically going to be wiping out a majority of the people in that first tier.
But you do have quite a few, you've got 154 firms that have been submitted, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, that, that, those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Viscarra, any questions?
How much? I don't remember, how much money are we talking about? So?
I believe it was over, just over $300,000, because there's 30, 30 grants at $10,000 each.
Okay.
For the business program.
And are, are the remaining ones that have not received any assistance, do they fall into various categories, or is it primarily food service or something else?
Well, the first tier was the food service, we haven't, we don't know what the, the second tier, how many of those people have received assistance, so it'd be when we contact them and proceed with the application process.
Sure. So I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, just to be clear, the recommendation is to, for the modification would mean that, what exactly? That people who have already received assistance would be able to qualify?
Right, we could, we could either proceed how we currently have it, and then disqualify those people, or either allow them to receive a full grant or do a partial grant, I think there's a couple different options.
So Adam, why wouldn't we just move to the next level? Instead of offering the people who already received money, some more money?
That would be the direction that you, that you gave us to do, so that, what you're suggesting, Councilmember Sternquist, is the original direction of, of, of the program, we just wanted to make sure, based on the volume of members that we saw, and the fact that we haven't really done. And the fact that we haven't really done this program before that we want to do kind of work. Making sure that that's what you're you're still comfortable with that going forward.
Okay, I am. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Mann, any questions?
Uh yes, so just just to clarify. Um when we as a council put a direction, we basically said we try to help at these. Businesses in the tier as much as possible, which is restaurants and food establishments. So. Now we're at a point where you're basically saying in the report, uh just to make sure I understand. Is that um a large number of those here one already have. Assistance and therefore would this would be disqualified based on council's previous direction?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I I don't have any more any more questions.
Thank you. So of the thirty businesses who were. Elected for this grant program from the first tier. Uh we basically have six that qualify at this point, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and are there any other in the one hundred and fifty four interest forms that were submitted? Do we have any additional? Part one or tier one businesses?
I'd have to refer to Mr. Gulick, but I don't believe so.
Okay, and so um. All right, that's all the questions I have. All right, uh let's go ahead and open up public comment. I will begin by asking the city clerk to uh. To uh let me know if there are any public comment emails at this time on this matter.
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right, and if you'll please unmute the microphones, um anybody in the public who is listening in on the meeting. Uh do any of you wish to comment on this matter?
We have one caller and the microphone is unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no comments, I I will close public comment. And we will take final uh council questions and or comments. I'll go ahead and again begin with Mayor Protem Yu.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I thought that um the decision that the council made previously was solid and um. The the whole purpose like we've been discussing was to help businesses that really need more help. Uh and then the fact that some had already received assistance. Uh in my opinion, that that it's okay to exclude them. Because we want more people benefit from 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 the aids that are available. Uh we want to spread the wealth, if you will, or spread the health. I am, so I I I, yeah, I think we should continue uh with what we have decided. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, uh Councilmember Viscara, any final comments?
Yeah, I I think I lost the the thread there a little bit. So what's what's left? We've identified the folks that that hadn't received any assistance. Now, if they're addressed. What's the next tier or what comes next?
So I'll let Mr. Gulick describe it, but there's tier two and tier three after that, of which we would then go through. And go through the same exact process based on the. Reaffirming the council's direction tonight, if I'm hearing kind of where things are going. Um so those what, Mr. Gulick, can you just describe briefly what those or or Mr. Remers, what's in those other two tiers?
I believe tier two was ground floor retail. And then tier three was service businesses. And then um I think the last one was all the all the other types of businesses.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Gulick. We would go through the same guys with each one. Until we got to the thirty, until we exhausted the thirty total uh grants.
Any any further comments, Councilmember Viscara?
Well, I thought he was waiting for an answer. No, no, I guess not.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mann? I'm sorry, Councilmember Sternquist?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mann?
Uh actually, a follow up question to Councilmember Viscara's point. Do we know if we have twenty four or more applications for businesses that fall within the tier two category?
I'd have to defer to staff on that. I don't believe we know that fully yet, but I let me I would. I would defer to staff on that question real quick.
Twenty four, twenty two, I thought eight had been counted.
So we, sorry, um we have a number of, there's four different tiers and the first tier. We had about twenty five uh different businesses. And the second tier, we had about fifteen businesses. And tier three, there is about forty five businesses. And then the last tier, there is forty two different businesses.
Okay, the the reason I I asked. I mean, it's in the report, it says we reviewed eighteen applicants. And only six qualified for tier one. So that would leave twenty four grants remain, ten thousand each. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct.
That's correct, okay. And I was just asking because um. I guess if you said there was fifteen in tier two, then. I I guess the next step is you you vet those fifteen applications to see if they. Qualify based on the criteria that we have previously established and. And then it kind of trickles down further if um we run into the same situation.
That's correct.
Okay, so um I I think I I agree with Mayor Protem's point. I think the. The principle behind the council's original action was to help those that didn't have any help. Um now granted, there there may print varying amounts of federal aid or other sources of aid. We we really don't know that. Um but I think to kind of keep things fair and back to the original principle, I would agree that um. We stick with the action, move on to tier two basically and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, uh thank you. And I want to thank staff for the update. Uh I think this was one of the things that we had asked that to be brought back. Before us to make sure that the program is working as we envisioned and we appreciate the information. Uh however, I I think I I mean, I know I agree with my fellow council members that. Um I I believe that we've fully vetted this out. When we had the discussion initially, we spent a long time discussing this. And we we anticipated these types of things and that's why we established the different tiers. And as as Mayor Protem pointed out, and the the thinking behind that was to. Spread the wealth, so to speak, and to help as many businesses as we could. And uh uh the numbers have played out that way and whether we go to. Uh second, third, fourth tier, that that plan is in place and I think it's a good plan. Plus, I I do have a little hard time changing the rules as we go. Because uh we don't know who maybe did not apply. The first time around because they knew that they would not qualify under the rules. So I think it would be unfair to those persons as well. So. Uh given that um uh I have no problem with proceeding uh as we already um. Uh directed and uh and see how the program uh vets out and. Of course, I'm sure we'll get another update at some point and see how that worked out ultimately. So. At this time, I will ask then for a council motion.
Uh Mayor, a move that we. Need with these. Work on guide as was directed previously by council. Uh such that businesses that have already monetary assistance uh were not qualifying.
Thank you. Do we have? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a we have a motion and a second unless there's any objection. I'll ask the city clerk to please take roll call.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much for that. We will now move on to item eleven, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I'll be brief tonight. Um things are going well. Uh with the proper occupancy, social distancing, staggered scheduling. And appointments at City Hall. I'd like to thank all the staff. For the adjustments that they've made and thank you to all of you, the council, for continuing to keep us safe collectively. And um you know, continuing to serve the public. It's been a great job. Um uh by everybody collectively as a team to do this together. Um as things continue to keep keep going, I think this is going to be something that we're going to be doing for the long haul. And I appreciate your patience, your understanding. As well as the, you know, the communities in the councils uh and our employees as we're adjusting to remote learning. All these different things that are out there. Uh just a preview for your next council meeting, too. Uh we'll we're finishing up the fourth fourth quarter, meaning. How we ended last fiscal year. So we'll be reporting back to you formally on that. It will not be your normal consent calendar item. It will be a formal presentation. By your the city's treasurer, city treasurer and administrative services director, Susan Pacaraz, who will provide you with. Uh where we where we where we ended up at the end of the fiscal year. Also, two will be bringing back to you uh a revised uh service contract for the Chamber of Commerce. To really reflect kind of the COVID nineteen world we're in. And and it's going to look a little bit different than the prior service agreements that you've seen in the past and actually they're going to be. Broken up into different time chunks as well so that you'll be able to see that. Uh and then lastly as well, we'll be bringing back to you. Uh the COVID nineteen service plan uh that you adopted and an update. You'll see a matrix. And you'll see a lot of the things that are being achieved uh have been achieved and are 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 in progress right now. So. Um a lot of good things going forward. Just thank you for your continued support of. Uh and of the staff and of the community as we continue to get through this event. They'll be light at the end of the tunnel. But we're doing it safely and we're doing it in a manner that's responsible and responsive to the community. So thank you. And I I'll lead I'll lead give the rest of my time to Mr. Murphy. We'll talk to you about the eviction moratorium. Issues and some of the state action, which we will also be providing the council with an update on some of the housing legislation. That most of it, which did not pass uh as of yesterday as well, too. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to item number twelve, update from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh Mr. Cook said housing legislation, uh the vast majority didn't pass. In particular, there was a package of five bills uh that the Senate proposed. Uh earlier this spring and all five of them went down. The. One that would have been toughest for Temple City was Senate Bill eleven twenty. Which would have allowed any single family residential lot to be split. And on each half of the split lot would have allowed a duplex to be built. So in a in. Yeah, yeah. In essence, a housing developer could get hold of a single family lot and build four units. Uh that went down. Um it was very interesting. It was actually approved by the Assembly last night at eleven fifty seven. Uh and was then sent to the Senate, which couldn't quite act by midnight, so the bill died. Uh the uh chair or president of the Senate was the one who originally proposed it. So there's a lot of speculation. Uh that the Speaker of the Assembly held the bill until late, late in the evening. Knowing that the bill would pass, but then wanting the bill to to die because of uh the clock running out. Uh so as Mr. Cook says, we'll send you more uh more of an update on that. What did pass yesterday was Assembly Bill three thousand eighty eight. It's a seventy two page bill that is the state's eviction moratorium. Uh I can comment on this tonight even with Councilmember Sternquist here. Because I'm I'm not going to take questions. Uh we we can, I'm happy to take questions individually from the four of you. Uh Councilmember Sternquist has done a great job in this regard, but I just want to walk through what the state adopted. Um it's a very factual presentation, but we'll walk through it and let you know what it means. Uh it because it's a seventy two page bill, please excuse me if I have some of the details slightly off. I'm going to continue to read. Uh other analyses of it and if you need any further updates, you'll get them in writing from me uh within the next week. Um what this focuses on is actually changes to the Civil Code and the Code of Civil Procedure regarding landlord-tenant law. Uh the state comes right out and says this is a matter of statewide concern, which, as you all know. Is a trigger language that means this applies to charter cities. Uh so what they have done is essentially preempt local ordinances. Uh in fact, in uh brand new Civil Code, section eleven seventy nine point zero five. They have come and specifically said that state law will control eviction moratoria until January thirty first of two thousand twenty one. Um and they have certain requirements during the period of now through January thirty first, two thousand twenty one. Uh tenants, uh if they want to qualify for the eviction moratorium, must make a statement under penalty of perjury. That they cannot pay the full amount of their rent because of COVID nineteen financial impacts. High income tenants, which are defined as being one hundred and thirty percent of the median income or higher. Need to actually provide evidence, some kind of proof. You'll remember that your ordinance required anyone to provide proof of COVID nineteen financial impacts. With the state's moratorium going in into play. Uh that means that anyone who is moderate income or below only needs to make a statement under penalty of perjury. They do, however, and this goes beyond what you had had required. They will have to pay going forward, starting uh today, have to pay twenty five percent of their monthly rent. Uh if they pay twenty five percent each month, uh then there will they cannot be evicted. What can happen? Well, let me get to this in a in a moment. Uh the restrictions on the landlords from this bill. Uh obviously, they cannot affect uh cannot evict a COVID nineteen affected tenant. When they make a payment demand on a COVID nineteen affected tenant, not just through January thirty first, but for quite some time thereafter. Instead of what the landlords uh in the city and other places know is the three day notice to pay. It's now a fifteen day notice if a tenant has made a claim under uh of COVID nineteen impacts. The landlords cannot require a tenant to enter into an agreement to waive any of the protections of AB thirty eighty eight. And uh there is now new small claims court jurisdiction for unpaid rent. Now that is unpaid rent uh from the start of the pandemic through today. As well as the seventy five percent per month for the next five months. Uh if tenants don't enter into an agreement to pay that rent. Then small claims courts are now authorized to take that on. What does that mean for landlords? Well, as we all know, small claims court does not allow attorneys. So it will be a judge dealing with the individual landlord or an agent. As well as with the individual tenant. There will not be attorneys involved. Attorneys can still uh work on the unlawful detainer actions when evictions are required. But in terms of getting the money, landlords will have to go through a small claims court. Uh again, as I say, that rent is considered a debt. Um and so it it's a debt that can be recovered in court. Couple other aids to landlords. Uh there is a restriction in place. Against foreclosures on uh multifamily developments of four units or less. I will be right upfront with you and say I don't understand all the technicalities of that. That's a bank. That's a banking law for landlords, but if you are a landlord watching this or listening to this tonight, your attorneys can help you figure that out. So, there, there is a restriction on foreclosure of your property. And then finally, this law was clear, and this is something that some tenant groups did not want. Evictions other than for COVID-19 financial impacts can begin moving forward in the month of September. So, the legislature was clear that if someone is harming the property, if there are non-COVID-19 non-payments, somebody can't, can't say under penalty of perjury that, that they, COVID-19 is a reason they can't pay, then evictions can move forward. There are a few other provisions that apply to proceedings that commenced before March 20th, when the Judicial Council's original moratorium went into place. But again, those are very specific, very detailed, and not really fitting a, a general update like this. So, what does this mean for you? Essentially, it means that your ordinance remains on the books and will cover or govern the relationship of landlords and tenants from January 31st through March 31st, at which time it, it will go away. But the state has, for all practical purposes, superseded your ordinance for the, the majority of its term. Again, happy to take any questions by phone or email, but I wanna make sure that we don't, don't get your fellow council member into trouble. So, thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you for that report. All right, we will now move on to item number 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anybody have anything to report? Not sure we've had any meetings.
Yeah, we've had one.
Oh, which one did you have?
Vince, you wanna take the lead on that?
Certainly. Councilmember Visgara and myself, we, we are on the Primrose Art Civic Arts Ad Hoc Committee. So, we met with staff, our Director Matsumoto, and to discuss our approach. And something we had brought up, and perhaps we can get some council directions as well, is that we thought of bringing in certain community members to assist us, who had been working on the civic arts in the past. We thought we might bring them in to kind of assist Councilmember Visgara and myself to make recommendations for the council to consider.
The only question I would have on that is that, do we need to do anything special, Mr. Murphy, to allow that to happen, or is that up to the ad hoc committee to determine who they wanna speak with and what involvement they will have?
I, I believe that's up to the ad hoc committee.
Okay. All right, well, if there's any, I'm sorry, Vince, does that, does that conclude your report?
Back in good shape, I know if, if Councilmember Visgara want to add anything.
Well, I'll just say it's, it's early days. We just left as far as we got. And, and we wanna talk to a couple of our community people that were involved with the arts program before and, and, and get their, see if they want to join us. And then start getting some preliminary ideas and report back to you guys whenever.
Okay. Well, I don't have any problem with that. Does anybody else in the council have any issue with them getting others involved?
No, I don't.
Andy? You okay? All right. All right, well, go ahead and we'll, we'll hear back from you when you've done some more work. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we will now move on to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. And I'll go ahead and begin with Councilmember Visgara.
Just editorializing a little bit. I was in two meetings before this, and they were both on Zoom. And I gotta tell you, the Zoom picture was a lot better. And, and anyway, it appeared to me, and there were fewer sound distractions.
That's all. I mean, you wanna look better on TV, is that it? All right. Thank you for that.
The picture, the pictures were better.
Yeah, I, I, I think I've, we've had this discussion, I've had this discussion before with our city manager that I, I preferably, I, I prefer Zoom as well, but you know, I'm sure there are reasons why we have the go-to meeting, but anyway, maybe we can take a look at that down the road. All right, Councilmember Mann, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, thank you. I wanna give a shout out to our dedicated deputy and public safety supervisor, Mr. Razzumia, for his whole neighborhood watch meeting. We held, was it last week or two weeks ago?
I think it was two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, yeah. The days are kind of blending together. But we, we had a pretty healthy number of participants. The material was good and seemed to go very well with the online art-type formats. And of course, with any online, we all run into a couple of technical difficulties. But for, for the most part, I just wanna commend them on a job well done and looking forward to kind of build on, on that success. And I thought having Mayor Chavez, you kind of introducing and opening was a nice touch as well. Thought it went well. I also wanna just report back, you know, as liaison between council and the Chamber of Commerce. Recently, at last board meeting, the Board elected a new Chair and Vice Chair. New Board Chair is Demercy, who many of you might know, works with TransTech. So, she is now the Board Chair, and Board Vice Chair is actually very own Planning Commissioner. So, have some new leaders there, as Mr. Brian Cook. Here with the new agreement with the Chamber. With, with new changes and communities, and especially in these strange times, I think adaptability and, and change will, will be good. That's all I have.
William? I lost most of what you said.
Oh, you did?
I don't know about you guys.
Was it completely lost?
I heard, I couldn't hear who the Vice Chair was.
Oh, I see. Okay, I'll, I'll repeat that. New Chamber Chair is Melissa. And our new Vice Chair is our Commissioner Jeffrey Lee.
Thank you.
Fernando, just FYI, I think that if you're not talking, it's better to put your microphone on mute. That way, it cuts down on the interference. That might help. Thanks. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mann. Councilmember Sternquist?
I had just a question about, I was gonna ask Mr. Murphy if you recall what our Airbnb policy is. You know, just the other night, there was the a Airbnb mansion, if you will, wasn't all that big, was rented out, and there was an actual shooting and someone was killed. And I thought that is literally about three little streets past Big Lots on Baldwin, so it was pretty close to home. And I know recently Glendora went to court to file a restraining order, or I'm not sure if that's what it's called, for a specific house that was continually being used for these type of parties. And I was wondering if we have any safeguards in our own city. I recall we did something with Airbnbs, but I don't remember what it was, Greg.
I would actually defer to Mr. Reimers on that. I think he has that probably further up in his brain than I do right now.
Thank you. Is, is Scott with us?
Scott, are you there? I, if, if Scott comes back, Scott, are you still there? Sounds like he's having some audio issues. Councilmember Sternquist, yes, we do. We actually have a subscription program that, that actually helps us track Airbnbs, so that the physical amount of staff we have or any city has to track down all the Airbnbs in a city is pretty limited. So, we actually subscribe as part of the budget, and we, we actually subscribe to a service that helps us track where Airbnbs are, what's being, what's being promoted, and we start to track that down through some efforts with compliance and letters. And so, we've been using that for several months now to assist us with enforcement. So, that's one of the, I can't remember the name of the program off the top of my head, but it's, it's one that we've been using to augment and provide both compliance and enforcement.
Sorry, Scott, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you, Scott.
Perfect. Sorry. Yes, the code doesn't allow someone to rent a unit for less than a 30-day period. So, that's how we define a short-term rental, and short-term rentals are prohibited in every zone of the city. So, it's a prohibited use. And then the, the software that Mr. Cook was talking about is called Hamari, and we've already started using it, and it's been very effective.
Great. And, and also, do we have a list of what we perceive to be the vacant houses in our city?
Vacant, there's no one living in that, that's difficult for us to determine. There's not really a good database or stores on determining when something's vacant.
Okay. I, I know Arcadia is doing something because they have so many of these very large 10, 11,000 square foot homes with huge pools, and they were getting a lot of the vacant properties listed on Airbnb. So, I don't know, maybe if, if we find some that are vacant, maybe we could just start to compile a list and have our Sheriff's Department be aware. Because I think a lot of people might just bypass Airbnb, especially because it's been in the news so much.
So, we, the Hamari website actually looks at something like 30 or 40 different websites that do short-term rentals.
Oh, great.
They use some algorithms to, to figure out which actual property it is, and then we contact the property owner. In terms of vacant properties, the code doesn't allow a property to be vacant for more than a specific amount of time. It gives us really clear, really good guidance on how to determine if a property's vacant. And in instances where we have run into that, typically, the issues are property nuisance-related, like a lawn that's been overgrown, newspapers are stacking up, the trash is coming up. And, and so that's kind of how we act on it.
Okay.
We gather that evidence, and then we go and talk to the property owner and tell them they need to get an occupant and to maintain the property.
Okay. You know, Scott, I also wanted to commend your department on the signs that look like real, real estate signs, for sale signs, but it actually is information telling the public that there is going to be a public hearing on the property. I don't know how long we've been doing it, but I've seen two, you know, within the last six months, and I just, and there's, you can grab a paper and it gives you some more information, but I just think that that's a great idea. So, I wanted to thank you for, for doing that.
Thank you. That was a part of the new zoning code. That was one of the pieces that we added.
Yeah, it's great. Thanks. And, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protamiu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing to add, except I still continue to impress with what the city manager and staff have done to keep the city going.
Hey, thank you. Okay, I just have a couple of quick, thank you. I have a couple of quick matters. I don't know if you guys can see this. California Water, this, if you take the LA Times, you get this insert every once in a while. And the reason I pointed out is in last week's, I think it was last week's edition, they talked about our LA County Sanitation District tracking the coronavirus in wastewater. And in fact, before this article came out, at last week's meeting, the Director was talking about this, Robert Ferrante, he's the Chief Engineer and General Manager at LA County Sanitation. And interestingly, that, that they have been working, the sanitation district has been testing the wastewater and found that there's a direct correlation between cases, new cases, and the amount of, of the virus in the wastewater. And so, you know, obviously, they're working with county public health officials to see how the data can help to, to track the spread of the virus. And it seems like a, a pretty interesting study, and, and they're gonna continue working on this. Basically, his comment was that it's a way of testing everyone in the, the population without really testing them. And so, it's certainly another tool that perhaps can be used in, in determining where this virus is and where it's spreading. So, more information to follow on that. So, if you have the opportunity to look at that California Water thing, there's a good article in it on that particular issue. Also, kind of topical right now, given that we're, we've been talking regarding our, our waste, our waste management. They are also beginning an organic waste program. That is LA Sanitation District is starting to develop an organic waste program. And they said that they will be sending information to all the city managers regarding that program. So, something that I know Brian is aware of, and certainly, I'm sure staff will take a look at that as a perhaps another option for the city to look at when it comes to organic wastes. And lastly, some of you may have already participated in the tours that the sanitation district has, primarily of the reclamation plant and their food waste plant, as well as maybe some of you have actually taken the boat rides out into the, to the harbor. They are going to begin those tours again, but obviously, they will be virtual tours. And so, you can go to their website. If you're interested in seeing how those things work, sign up for one of their virtual tours. And I would like to echo, yes, go ahead, Vince.
Won't get seasick.
Say that again? Yeah, yeah, you don't get seasick on this one. Although, I don't know, maybe they'll, maybe the screen will be rocking, who knows? Okay. So, and just to echo what Councilmember Mann about the Neighborhood Watch, again, shout out to both Brian Arizumi and staff, and of course, our sheriff deputies. For the first time, I, you know, you expected some glitches, but I thought it went off really, really well. There were a lot of participants. There was questions. Of course, the only thing we were missing were the tacos, but not too much we could do about that. But, but other than that, good program, and I'm glad to see that, that they are continuing with that. And I believe the next one is scheduled in October. I'm not sure of the date, but I'm sure that's on the website. It'll be held in October. So, so good job to everyone involved in that. Lastly, I don't know if anybody else has received an email, but I have received a couple of emails in the past two weeks regarding questions about whether or not the city is interested in perhaps looking at an alternative, alternate, I guess, to, to our Sheriff Department. And some of you may recall, I know Cindy, and I think Fernando may recall, and Vince, years ago. And some of you may recall, I know Cindy, um, and I think Fernando may recall and Vince, years ago, uh, we were looking at this issue and perhaps deciding, uh, you know, what is best for the community as far as, uh, do we need our own police department? If some cities do, or do we, or is the, um, thing that we have with the sheriff, uh, work best? And of course, we took a look at that and I think ultimately we determined that, uh, it would have been very cost prohibitive and also at the same time, not sure if the, um, services would have been, um, much better than what we were getting now. Um, the reason I bring it up is I, I told this individual that I would, uh, bring this up at the council meeting. Uh, he asked that, uh, that we agendize this item. Uh, I was reluctant to agendize this item without first getting a feel for the council and whether anybody would, um, you know, like to look at that, whether we want to look at that. Uh, I don't need an answer right now, but maybe if you can share that, uh, with our city manager. And, uh, if it's something that, uh, maybe the council is interested in, we can, uh, put it on a future agenda. Uh, I know that, uh, for me, uh, the count, the, the sheriff department, at least as far as the city of Temple City, I think, uh, we have a very good partnership with them and I believe that they are doing a very good job. Are they perfect? No, by all means, they are not. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's a question of, uh, you know, what, what can we do for the city? Uh, just like anything else, we're always looking for ways of improving the services that we receive. So if anybody has anything to add on that, whatever, then I would, uh, ask you perhaps to discuss that, uh, with Brian. Or, uh, we can always bring it up at a, at a future meeting or even think about putting it on the agenda. Okay. All right, um, and with that, uh, I think that's all I have. Uh, let me look at my notes, uh, I believe so. So now we will then move on to item fifteen. We're going to recess to our successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. And I will call that meeting to order and ask that our city clerk take roll call.
Agency member Mann?
Here.
Agency member Sternquist?
Here.
Agency member Viscara?
You're muted, Fernando.
Yeah, here, here, sorry.
Thank you. Please, Chair Yu?
Here.
Chair Chavez?
Here. Okay, we'll now move on to item three, our consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion unless, as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Unless there's any objection, can we, uh, have a roll call, please?
Agency member Mann?
You're, you're muted, William.
Oh, yes.
Yes. Agency member Viscara?
Yes.
Vice chair Yu?
Yeah.
Chair Viscara, I'm sorry, Chair Chavez? Me? Chair Chairman Chavez?
Yes. Okay, I think we got everybody there. Okay, uh, we will now, I have moved item four unfinished business. There is none. New business, none. Communications, none. I will now open up public comments. I will ask the city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, mayor.
Thank you. For those calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. If anybody who is listening would like to comment on this item at this time.
We have one caller and the microphone is unmuted.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no response, I will close public comments. We will now move to item eight, update from executive director and agency council. Anything?
No, no report.
Right. No report from agency council either. Number nine, matters from agency members, anything, any matters from agency members? Hearing none, uh, we were now adjourned. So now we will return to our regular meeting, uh, we will move to item sixteen, additional public comments. On items not listed on the agenda, I will ask the city clerk if there are any email requests to speak at this time.
No, mayor, there are no requests.
Okay, and for those calling in, we will now unmute your microphones. Anybody who is on the line, uh, if you'd like to speak, uh, at this time, feel free to do so. Hearing none, I will close public comments. And that will, uh, lead us to item number seventeen and we are adjourned for this evening. So thank you, everyone. Uh, good meeting, um, and a lot of good work done. And so, uh, I will say goodbye to everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy and, uh, we'll see you soon. Take care.